Twenty-one. May I have a roll call, please?
County Commissioners Octor, Bartlett.
Here.
Best, Duffy.
Here.
Lazar, Deputy Director James.
Here.
Director Lapur.
Here. Announcement of the open public meeting law?
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of the open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location, including the annual notice adopted, the reorganization meeting filed with the county clerk, posted in the administration building, and mailed to two newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the law.
Please stand for the indication.
Oh God, who provides for thy people by thy power and rules over them in love, be gracious enough to bless thy servants, our county commissioners in the county of Passaic, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord. Amen.
Commissioner Duffy?
Please show me.
Congratulations.
To the flag, oh United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence to remember all the men and women who have died while serving the United States Armed Forces and who have died from the COVID-19, especially the eighteen-hundred-and-one residents of Passaic County.
Director, if I could, I'd just like to recognize John Lazar. He passed away on October fifteenth of this year. He was obviously a relative of mine. He left his wife and his two kids, but he lived a full life, and part of his love not only was motorcycles, but his position with the Passaic County Sheriff's Department and the men and women that he served with. So I'd just like to have a little bit of remembrance for him.
Thank you. Motion to approve the minutes of September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Bartlett, second by Deputy Director James. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett, Duffy.
Epstein.
Lazar.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapur.
Yes. Approval of profferments, need a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Bartlett, second by Commissioner Duffy.
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazar.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapur.
Yes. Ministers' report?
Yeah, Director, so we are honored to have with us the new president of Montclair State University with us. I know you want to do a little bit of an introduction.
Yes, on behalf of the Commissioners, Mr. Capel, I would like to welcome you to Passaic County Board of Commissioners Meeting. I have a little bio here from you, Jonathan G.S. Capel. Am I saying your name right?
Yeah, Copel, Rhamesville Hotel.
Montclair State University's ninth president is nationally recognized, a scholar of policy, organization, and management with a reputation as a visionary leader in higher education, emphasizing public service and solution-oriented engagement in the community. Before taking office at Montclair State on August second, twenty-twenty-one, Mr. Capel served as the dean of Arizona State University's Watts College of Public Service and Community Solutions and a vice provost for public service and social impact, leading the nation's largest comprehensive public affairs college. And he also led the college in a significantly and significantly improved student retention and graduation rates throughout the new and innovative counseling and student support initiatives. Now, there's a whole bunch of other stuff.
Yeah, don't, don't, please, that was too much already.
But I would, I think, it sounded a little better coming from you.
Yeah. Can I, I don't know what the protocol is. Can I take this off to talk? So, first of all, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself. I'm very excited to be with you this evening, and I want to start by thanking all of you for serving in this capacity. Really appreciate it and recognize how, how important that is. As you said, I'm the new president of Montclair State University, and even though it's got the name Montclair in it, and Montclair is in Essex County, I can read a map, and the majority of the university, as you all know, is in Passaic County. So I'm very excited to be with you this evening, and also to celebrate some of the collaboration that there has been between the university and Passaic County, particularly around response to COVID. I think that's been a, that's been a real triumph. The part that I'll pick up from the bio that is important to underscore, my view is that the university exists to serve the public interest. Yes, we are a public university, and part of that is that we get some money from the taxpayers of our state, but it's not, that's not what makes us a public university. What makes us a public university is that we exist to advance the public interest, just as you are all here, serving to advance the public interest. And so what, what I believe is that our first order obligation is to find opportunities to collaborate with members of the community, to be partners with governments, nonprofits, civic organizations, to help achieve the aspirations that people have for their own communities. Now, part of that, of course, is creating an awesome research university that has degree options for our students to be accessible and inclusive, so that everybody in our community can find a pathway to a degree, an undergraduate degree, a graduate degree, but also that universities have incredible power to advance solutions to the most challenging problems we face, whether it be economic development, crime, homelessness, trust between communities and police agencies. These are the kinds of things that I did in Arizona, and really, I think, showed that a different model of university-community relations is possible, one that is a partnership, and that is, you know, a lot of give and take and a lot of collaboration. That's what I'm hoping to build here in Passaic. I will say that I'm particularly intrigued by what we can do right here in Patterson, which I think has an enormous amount of energy and excitement and potential. People, I think, cast a little bit of a, of a shadow on this town, but I'm excited by the potential. I've had great interactions already with the mayor and with some of the community groups, talked over at Hinchcliffe Stadium, which is, I think, an incredibly exciting project, which along with the, with the National Park around the Great Falls is going to really be an opportunity to do great things, and I think the university in that space and in many other spaces can be a big part of it. So, I know I'm not, I'm not going to try and filibuster. As I say, I think this is the, this is the, an introduction, but I look forward to getting to know you individually and hearing about what your ambitions are for Passaic and how the university can be an instrument, an instrument to advance those goals with you.
Well, thank you. Any of my Commissioners, our Commissioners here have any questions or comments or anything?
Well, welcome aboard. It's a great, it's a great institution. I think you're going to make it even better, from what you said, and I'm looking forward to working with you.
Thanks so much.
We have a lot more partnerships to create, and I think you're going to be willing to do that, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for, for being here. I'm sure the climate of New Jersey brought you here from Arizona, right? Well, that nice weather was boring you when you had a experience in New Jersey. I did just want to take a.
When is it going to be a hundred and twenty degrees here?
It's dry heat, like my oven.
That's the line.
I just did want to take the opportunity to thank your chief of staff and your predecessor's chief of staff, Keith Barrett, for being here. You know, Keith was a great asset during our COVID response, and it was always, how can we get it done? And, you know, he was the go-to guy for me, at least, and my health department. So I did just want to recognize Keith's role of his work and his friendship, and I, I think together this is going to be a great relationship.
Thank you. I am, I'm a native New Yorker, so the region is comfortable to me. I feel very, I feel very comfortable, but Keith is my tutor on all things New Jersey, because I don't.
He's the guy.
I don't, I don't pretend that my New Yorker knowledge doesn't translate.
You want to pick up the accent?
I'm working on it. I still say talk. I'm still, I'm still more of a New Yorker than I am a Jersey guy, but I'll get there, I promise. Very good.
Good to meet you, and thank you.
The bigger question is, are you a Giant fan or Cardinal fan?
Say yes, just say yes.
I'm a Jets fan, as a way.
Oh, my word, my condolences.
That's, and that is, that is the appropriate response. But it's good to know that the Jets that I left resemble very much the Jets that I found upon my return, so some things are very familiar.
Very good, very good.
Thank you so much.
Once again, thank you for participating tonight, and looking forward to see a lot of interactions.
Absolutely, my pleasure. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, the Diggan program was.
That's postponed until, yeah.
Postponed, and now we have an update of the response to the COVID-19 pandemic by.
There's our.
Had an additional one thousand seven hundred fifty-four cases, putting us at a total of seventy-three thousand one hundred and twelve confirmed COVID-19 cases. In regards to deaths, we've had an additional twenty since September. Cumulative hospitalizations are at seven thousand two hundred ninety-three. COVID positivity for a seven-day average is currently at three point ninety percent. Compared to last month, we were at five point fifty, so we're, we're definitely seeing a decrease there. Multi-system inflammatory syndrome in children, we've had a total of eighteen with no additional since our last meeting. In this slide, you could see confirmed cases throughout the county from the beginning. On the left side, you have from the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic until current date, and you can see that we are currently nowhere to where we were last year. However, we are still continuous with some cases. On the slide that's on the right, you could see that within the three months, we've had a little, we had our spike like in mid-August, and then another little spike in September. But from there, we have seen a decline, and we hope that that continues to be the trend moving forward. When we're discussing percent positivity, the same could be seen here, so we're definitely seeing that decline. And of course, amongst our municipality, you could see that in, throughout our municipalities in the county, we've had our confirmed cases. And here, you could see that it's from the month of July twenty-fifth to October twenty-fifth, so it's still continuous, and something that, you know, by practicing what we've been practicing in the last few months now, we, we would hopefully see that decline continuing. Passaic County Department of Health Services, you could see our, we are providing clinics throughout the county. We're working together with our agencies, providing not only onsite clinics, but also mobile clinics, homebound clinics. And through these, we have been able to reach our county residents. For first doses administered, we've had a total of thirty-two thousand eight hundred fifty-two. And again, this is a number that's just the county health department alone. Second doses, we've administered twenty-eight thousand three hundred twenty-one. Third doses and boosters, we're at two hundred and sixteen. And total doses administered have been a total of sixty-one thousand three hundred eighty-nine. So we are providing our COVID-19 vaccinations to those who are eligible, starting from twelve years of age and older. In this next slide, you are able to see the municipalities that have received our services and who have, whose residents have received our vaccinations. And again, you could see we've done a lot throughout the, the counties, again, through our various onsite, mobile, and homebound clinics. When we're reaching our population, again, we have a diverse population in Passaic County. And here, we could see that for our Hispanic population, we've reached nineteen percent, not Hispanic, fifty-five percent, and those who prefer not to specify, up to twenty-six percent. And of course, we've also not only partnered with our community agencies, but we've also partnered with businesses in the community. So we've had a total of twenty-nine clinics with our Passaic County businesses, providing a total of one thousand thirty-nine vaccinations. We've administered satellite clinics and our homebound clinics, a total of two thousand nine hundred sixteen vaccines. And also, we've gone into our Passaic County jail, and we've done our own in-house, so for in-house, as of July first, we've done two hundred and sixty-two vaccinations. So recent sites that we've worked with have been with the Woodland Park Farmers Market, Paulson Park in Hawthorne, Preakness Healthcare Center in Wayne, and other listed clinics that Patrick will, will inform you later on. For our homebound vaccinations, we've reached a total of sixty, sixty-nine percent among those who are sixty-five or older, nineteen percent among those who are forty-five to sixty-four, seven percent among those who are thirty to forty-four, four percent among those who are eighteen to twenty-nine years of age, and one percent among those who are zero to seventeen. So in this next slide, you're able to see the vaccination clinics that we've been able to provide from, again, beginning of January to our current. And again, you could see there's a big difference, a big decline, and requests for the vaccine moving forward. However, we are seeing an uptick again regarding the need for vaccination and requests of vaccination among our residents. And we could see it in this slide here. So in the beginning of COVID-19, obviously, they were looking for the first doses to second doses, but now currently, because of the new third doses and booster updates that we've been receiving, we have also had a desire for that third dose or booster. This information that you see up here is information from our NJDOH dashboard, so similarly to what we've been providing. Everyone throughout the state has been working hard indigenously, among other agencies, not just county health department. And in our efforts, we're, we've been able to establish administration of vaccinations among our diverse population. At this time, doses administered come out to a total of six hundred fifty-eight, three thousand and two. And for first doses, we've received a total of three hundred sixty-nine, nine hundred eighty-eight doses. And people who are fully vaccinated are at a total of three hundred fourteen, two hundred sixty-seven. In this next slide, we're able to see vaccination progress within Passaic County as to who has completed their courses. So on the left side, we're able to see the age group between ages of twelve or older, and ten percent of them have had their initiated course. Seven three percent have received their courses completely, so there are two doses. For those who are eighteen or older, almost similarly to those who are twelve, ten percent initiated their courses, and seventy-six percent have received their completed courses. So everyone, twelve and older. And then the next one would be eighteen and older. And then in this next slide, we're able to see the twenty-eight-day comparison from throughout the whole municipalities that we have within our county. And I could tell you now that as time has been progressing, we're able to see more and more people getting vaccinated, increases of one, up to three percent. And this would be for at least one dose administered throughout the population. So for this here, it would be for, I would think it would be including adults, yeah. So it would be for our adult population. And then Patrick just has some information regarding our boosters and the recent information that we've had for COVID-19.
So a few days ago, two mandates went into effect. All workers in preschools through grade twelve schools will be required to be fully vaccinated or be subjected to testing, and the same is in place for workers at state agencies, authorities, colleges, and universities. Governor Murphy also signed Executive Order two sixty-four, which necessitates that all childcare personnel be fully vaccinated by November first, or be tested at minimum once per week. So now regarding the pediatric dose, we have been informed that the Pfizer vaccine for ages five to eleven is imminent. The VRBAC or the Vaccine Related Biological Products Advisory Committee will meet this week. In fact, I believe they met today, and I did receive an alert on my phone on my way here that they've endorsed it. So followed this endorsement will be an ACIP meeting next week. We've been told that it would be a new product with smaller doses than the twelve and older formulation. So providers and health departments have been authorized to place orders for this sub, for this subgroup. So boosters for Johnson &amp; Johnson have been authorized by the FDA and the CDC. The amount of the booster dose is the same as the primary dose, so that will be zero point five milliliters. And it's now recommended that all who receive the Johnson &amp; Johnson as their primary series receive the booster of their choice two months after the initial dose. So if an individual received Johnson &amp; Johnson as their primary dose in March twenty-twenty-one, for example, their booster dose should be administered two months after, so that would be in May twenty-twenty-one. But since we've now received this guidance, this booster dose should, should be administered now. And if another individual received their primary J&amp;J dose this month, October twenty-twenty-one, their booster dose should be administered in December twenty-twenty-one. So for individuals that receive Moderna doses as their primary two-dose series and Pfizer as their primary two-dose series, a booster is authorized for an eligible population. So for J&amp;J, it's everyone who received it, and for Moderna and Pfizer, it's those who are sixty-five years and older, eighteen year, eighteen years older, older, and living in a long-term care facility, eighteen to sixty-four years old with underlying medical conditions. And this is not an exhaustive list, but some examples may include smokers, current or former, overweight or obese, diabetes type one or two, dementia, cancer patients, asthma, Down Syndrome, and individuals with heart disease. And this booster dose should be administered six months following dose number two, and the, and that individual has the autonomy to choose the vaccine of their choice. And again, for individuals who identify as moderately to severely immunocompromised, an additional dose should be administered twenty-eight days following dose number two for recipients of the Moderna vaccine and recipients of the Pfizer vaccine. So their primary dose, their primary series is three doses, without consideration for a booster dose for those who are immunocompromised at this time. So if an immunocompromised individual received their first dose in September twenty-twenty-one and their second in October, their, their, their dose would be in November twenty-twenty-one with no booster. However, since a number of immunocompromised individuals received their primary dose in the early days of the vaccine effort, and months have passed, it should be, so they should receive the third dose now, even though a number of months have passed, and it should be the same manufacturer as the primary series manufacturer. Though again, for boosters, individuals do have the autonomy to choose the vaccine of their choice. And additionally, all doses remain the same for booster doses with the exception of Moderna, which is authorized to be half of the primary series or zero point two-five milliliters. So we do have a, a number of upcoming clinics. We have our in-house clinics every Tuesday and Thursday from nine AM until six PM. Homecoming vaccinations are as request, and we're happy to provide those through our nurses in the health department. We do have two health clinics, or vaccine clinics for November first and November eighth, times to be announced shortly. At the Halden Municipal Complex, we'll host a vaccine clinic where we'll offer both the flu vaccine and the COVID vaccines. And at all these clinics, we'll have booster doses as well. So the Halden Clinic is from two PM until seven PM, and our nurse Sandy Cameron is in conversation about hosting additional booster clinics in Woodland Park, West Millford, Wannacue, and Halden. And again, the flu clinic in Halden will be on November third. So to highlight once more, you may receive the booster dose of your primary series, the booster dose, and you may receive your primary series doses from the county health department. We'll be hosting these clinics from Tuesday, Tuesday and Thursday from nine AM until six PM, so we welcome all to come and get vaccinated. Thank you.
Questions, folks?
Yes, we do. So we have a supply of Pfizer, Moderna, and Johnson &amp; Johnson. Yes. Yep, so we have an ample supply of the Moderna booster as well.
Yeah, so we have, we have been going to our different municipalities. There is, and basically flyers from NJDOH fact sheets that they've developed that inform the public about the difference between the third dose and the booster. And then recently, because we've received the information from NJDOH regarding the upcoming boosters, I believe the health educators are currently in the process of creating something that would be easier to inform our community. I'm sorry? So we do have their, their contact information. So we are currently working with, with the list that Patrick has, and we've been making phone calls, having them come over if they're ready for their booster.
Yeah, through you, Director. You mentioned that the juvenile formulation, the, what we hope our next week forthcoming opportunity for kids five to eleven to be vaccinated is a different formulation. Any sense of when we'll receive that, and what is the county, what is your office's plan to start pushing that out, whether it's through schools or our site, or what's, what's the plan there?
Absolutely. So I understand that vaccine clinics will be hosted at schools. There is a conversation, and there is a template to be sent out to schools within the county to host on school grounds. So that's a recent development, but that's as far as the extent that I, that I understand. And if this pediatric formulation is authorized, we are expected to receive it by next week. If it's authorized by today or tomorrow, we're expected to receive it in days.
And would that be our staff administering it in schools, or would that be school nurses and other staff?
So currently, we have our public health nurse, Sandy Cameron, who's doing the planning for the administration of the pediatric doses. I guess that may change depending on, you know, who wants the vaccine.
There was a conference call on Monday with the Commissioner of Health. She's encouraging all of the counties to partner with the schools. I've already contacted our county superintendent, Ms. Drakeford, to coordinate how we can assist the schools in doing it. It's obviously a bigger than our health department can do, so, you know, all the schools and their, and their nurses will be, you know, hopefully partners in that. What that's going to look like, I can't tell you right now. But I will tell you that Passaic County is one of the first counties that has had conversations about partnering and moving forward. The only other thing of interest that I'll say on that, that call was that the Commissioner of Health said that it's her belief that this is now the longest-running pandemic on record, which I guess if you stop to think about it, it, it's not so crazy, but when you hear it said out loud, it definitely made you pause and, and think about what we've gone through this last twenty months.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Moving on, I'll take a motion to suspend the regular order of business.
I'll move it.
Motion made by Deputy Director James, second by Commissioner Lazar. Roll call.
County Commissioners Octor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazar.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapur.
Yes. Bond ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash oh six.
Bond ordinance to authorize the construction of a new biotechnology facility for the vocational school in the county of Passaic, in, by, and for the county of Passaic, state in New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of twenty-four million, seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and one dollars to pay the cost thereof to, to appropriate a state grant to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation and to provide for such issuance of bond anticipations. issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
Motion to open the public hearing on Bond Ordinance 2021-06. Motion made by Commissioner Lozara, second by Deputy Director James. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Opter, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, Lozara, Deputy Director James, Director Lapore.
Yes. Does anyone present desire to be heard on Bond Ordinance 2021-06? Please keep in mind you have three minutes, and thanks to our IT department, we have some new technology here. There's a red, yellow, and green light there to let you know how you're coming along there. Please state your name and address, and keep in mind that anything that you say will be a matter of public record. Good evening, Jay.
Jay Cohen, 2319 Warrens Way, Wannacue. I've spoken before about the Passaic County Tech. It's a good school, but I feel it's become such a large school, it's a campus that's almost like a college. One of the earliest of these vocational schools to turn itself around was the Bergen County Vocational Schools. John Greco was known, before he passed away, as one of the pioneers of these models, and he created three different campuses. He has a campus in Paramus and a campus in Teterboro and a campus in Hackensack. Here we have one campus. We're creating the largest, one of the largest schools in the state of New Jersey. One of the other meetings, I asked if you would do an impact study, what this school is doing to the other schools. I know the three regional schools really suffer, as well as Clifton High School and the Wayne Schools, you can go right down the list. All of our schools are suffering. You create, they don't, you bond and you build for this school, and it becomes a very sexy place to go to. The other schools have to pay for their enhancements in their physical plant. They also have to pay tuition for this school, and I know many schools are paying a million dollars a year or more in tuition money that could be used to enhance their own schools. I just remind the commissioners, you're not just the commissioner of the Passaic County Vocational School, you are representatives of all the schools in the county, and you have to recognize that those schools are hurting. And again, I ask, has an impact study ever been done which showed what the county vocational school does to the community schools? Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else who wants to be heard?
Seeing no one at the podium, I moved to close the public portion.
Motion made by Commissioner Duffy, second by Commissioner, Deputy Director James to close. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Opter, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, Lozara, Deputy Director James, Director Lapore.
Yes. Take a motion to adopt Bond Ordinance 2021-06. Motion made by Deputy Director James, second by Commissioner Opter. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Opter, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, Lozara, Deputy Director James, Director Lapore.
Yes. Just want to correct you, Jay, on a couple of things. First of all, thanks for coming down and sharing your opinion on things. You said that we represent all the schools. That's not an accurate statement. The boards of educations of the various schools are their representatives. We really have no input, and quite frankly, we don't have that much input in the Passaic County Tech school other than to be the conduit of either state money that goes there. As far as the tuition, the tuition hasn't changed in...
I'll say at least three.
At least three years.
The tuition from the districts to Tech hasn't changed in three years. The tax levy in the county budget...
Ten, nine?
Hasn't changed in over ten years.
The tax levy hasn't changed in over ten years. So I get your point. They operate under somewhat different set of rules, but they're not our rules. These are the rules that are in place from the state and possibly some input from the feds, I'm not sure, but that's where we are with that. And as far as the campus being a great campus, that's the most accurate statement you made. It is a great campus. It's a wonderful place to offer education for all the students there. We have a list of, I don't know, well over 2,000 students that apply, and we just don't have the room for it. So this, I think this expansion is good, it's needed, it's necessary, and overall, it will enhance the educational environment of Passaic County.
Can I just add something, Director? You mentioned Clifton. I live in Clifton. We just approved $160 million bond issuance, more than two to one, and we don't really have a problem in Clifton High School. They have a great graduation rate, they have a great acceptance to college rate, their sports teams are all doing well. So I don't know where you got the information about Clifton, but it's inaccurate and incorrect. The project that is being done is really a state of New Jersey project, and you had to have a partner with a community college. And so this community college, our community college, is the Fire Academy, and the new facility is going to be on top of the Fire Academy from the STEM Academy. So it's an opportunity for another 1,200 kids from Passaic County to get one heck of an opportunity for education, and they're going to get, they can get three years of college credit, and if they go to Ramapo after senior year, they get a free year, so they'll get essentially a four-year degree for nothing, except doing well in school. That's a win-win all the way around. So I'm sorry you feel the way you feel, but I don't think this is a burden to anybody. I think this is a great opportunity for the people that we serve.
Okay. All right, moving on, motion to resume the regular order of business. Make that motion. Made by Commissioner Bartlett, second by Commissioner Opter. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Opter, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, Lozara, Deputy Director James, Director Lapore.
Yes. Next on the agenda is the county commissioner reports, but given the fact that I see a lot of faces here tonight, possibly want to engage in the public portion, I'm going to move that later on, and we will move to the public portion. Motion to open to the public portion of the meeting. Motion made by, I didn't catch it. All right. Motion made by Commissioner, Deputy Director James, second by, I guess, Opter. Roll call.
From now on, you can just call me Commissioner James. It's a lot easier than having to say this. Doesn't matter to me.
I can call you Double D.
Good for you.
Roll call.
County Commissioners, Opter, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, Lozara, Deputy Director James, Director Lapore.
Yes. As I just stated in the previous public portion, when you come up, please state your name and address. You have three minutes. Our new technology will, you'll have a visual as to how much time you have and if you're gone over. And please keep in mind that any comments that you made are a matter of public record. So anyone from the public wishing to be heard.
Director, you told them about the green, yellow, and red lights. Did you tell them about the trap door?
The trap door? No, not me. Anyone from the public wishing to be heard? Step right up. If you notice, we also moved the podium over to the center of the room. We had a little trouble seeing you, members of the public with, especially with these glass partitions, you're almost like a glare over there. So I want to thank IT for taking care of that for us.
Renee Alessio, 39 Hillcrest Drive in West Milford. I just heard that you pulled the resolution opposing the TGP compressor station in...
I haven't yet, but I intend to do it, yes.
I'd like to know why, because I feel like I came down with other people from West Milford, Wayne, other sections of Passaic County, even though there's a state of emergency today because of bad weather, you know, and the reason why there's bad weather is because of climate change. And so, you know, I was hopefully, you know, coming here today, even though the weather's bad, to thank the commissioners for writing this resolution. I have a whole, I had a whole different speech. As a matter of fact, it went through email because I wasn't sure if I was going to get here. But now, you know, I'm really disappointed. I feel like the commissioners are playing games, a game with the lives of people in this county, with the people of northern New Jersey. And I don't know, I'm like shocked, you know, because we've been asking for months and it's been back and forth. You'll say, yeah, you're going to do a resolution, and then the next minute, it's gone. You know, you pull it, and I don't know, I don't know who's gotten to you, whether it's TGP, whether it's unions, you know, I don't know, but the people, the real people of this county, and it's the real people that have been the ones that are asking the commissioners to oppose this project, which is really terrible for the environment, it's terrible for the people of the entire county, and it's just going to hurt us, and it's, once again, fossil, you know, we don't need the fossil fuels. We have to start, you know, instead of increasing the use of fossil fuels, we have to decrease the fossil fuels of this, and your resolution was perfect. So I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. Before I ask the next speaker to come up, a member of the public, maybe I can answer a few questions. Ms. Alessio, you asked a very good question. The actual bottom line is, is as the director, I have the ability to pull anything from the consent agenda to either be addressed or to be changed or whatever. I would also like to state that none of my colleagues here asked me to pull this. As a matter of fact, some of them were quite surprised that I was doing it. I had numerous conversations, spent most of yesterday taking calls from other stakeholders involved in this project, and they asked for the opportunity to come before the board to state their point, their position, and to answer any questions that the commissioners may have. I didn't think it was an unreasonable ask. I'm sorry that you came down. I wish it was a way I've been able, I'd be able to know who was coming and to contact them, but this all happened yesterday. But I want to emphasize that this is my doing, not my colleagues. Matter of fact, some of them just found out, well, they all found out today when I texted them and told them that I gave them the heads up that I was doing this. I'm going to give the opportunity to the other stakeholders to come in the next meeting or two, to present their case, to answer questions. I mean, I have questions about certain things, and I just think that the most fair and transparent way of doing this is to have them in front of the board before the board makes a decision on any resolution, either for or against it. So that's my statement on that issue, and then we'll continue with the public portion. Yes, just come up.
Good evening, Passaic County Commissioners. It's really nice to see you tonight. My name is Melissa Brown Blower. I'm from West Milford, New Jersey. I rode down with Renee and Carl Steele, hoping to celebrate tonight that we were getting some backing and support from the commissioners in our effort to find a better use for the location at Moncell Reservoir, where they're proposing to build a large compressor station and basically embed fossil fuel infrastructure in the county and in northern New Jersey for decades to come, which runs counter to the environmental master plan, energy master plan of the state of New Jersey, which is really aiming to divest from fossil fuels 50% by 2030 and 100% by 2050. Renee made a great point about climate change, you know, being a common occurrence with every weather impact, severe weather that happens, you know, and there's a lot of it going on right now, a lot of tragic weather incidents happening all across the country. And so we're very concerned about that, and I'm also on the Economic Development Commission in West Milford, and I've been in for seven years. And I'm in charge of tourism development up there. I'm working on a website. I'm a little bit on a hiatus right now because I'm also running for the state legislature on a platform of green energy and investment in a future that invests in modern technology and uses creativity and innovation and the power of education and knowledge to find creative solutions to our most entrenched problems, including energy solutions. So I really want to back what Renee had to say. I think a lot of people in West Milford have been really trying to get their voices heard. Our own town council kind of automatically went with TGP and just kind of acquiesced and said, well, what can we, how can we negotiate with you, without really giving a lot of credence and weight to the overwhelming opposition and the overwhelming, as you all know, the voices of the people of West Milford who came out against it. So we're really looking for that support, and I will continue to be present and part of this conversation and in the long term, hoping that a better use for that property is made. I would love to see a solar farm there or some kind of use that is a green energy source of development that also benefits the town and the state. This particular compressor station is actually a private enterprise, and the purpose of the gas is to export, you know, it's really not benefiting people, it's for electric generation, and we do have a high electric demand, you know, and that's only going to grow, but there are better ways of engineering and planning for that future other than continuing to invest in fossil fuel infrastructure. So I'll wrap it up now. I'll be back. I'm going to be watching the agenda, I'm sure Renee will keep me on top of this, and I hope to see a better outcome and to just realize that, you know, the people are really behind us and a private enterprise trying to offload the costs of using fossil fuels is not as compelling as the voice of the people and the real future that everybody is hoping for. Thank you.
I'm Barbara Stomper, 101 Kiwanis Drive, Wayne, New Jersey. I, first of all, would just like to thank the commissioners for their wonderful job they have done with COVID, and as a Wayne resident, I also appreciate the fact that you've given us a grant for Kilroy Park because I'm sure that that is going to be a wonderful facility in the future. But I'm very disappointed about the fact that the resolution was pulled this evening. I'm also the coordinator for Franciscan Response to Fossil Fuels, and we are an organization that was founded on the principles of St. Francis, and we feel very, very strongly about the environment and the, and creation in general. So we have members throughout the county, and one of the big things that we were looking forward to is to stop this project from being built. It is another fossil fuel project that does not benefit New Jersey in the least, and we are wondering, why is it that the stakeholders could not be here this evening? We made it our business to come here, and now everything is canceled. So it is very, very disappointing that the stakeholders could not be present here this evening. So thank you very much for listening to my comments, and I hope that this resolution will pass. Thank you.
Carl Steele, 23 Gifford Road in Uwet, New Jersey. Thank you for giving us an opportunity to speak to you, and Commissioner Lapore, I appreciate your letting us know that you were the one who was responsible for pulling the resolution. My request would be that we would love to go head-to-head with the stakeholders because we have not been able to do that in West Milford with our mayor and town council, and we, I believe, would have science on our side. And we, I believe, would have science on our side to support our concerns as to why we do not want the compressor station for our residents. So if you could let us know sometime this evening or in the future, when we could meet with them, but there's been no debate. And if you just heard our point of view, I would say, listen to their point of view. You'd need to do that. Don't just accept our information or our word. But it seems like we, we're just getting battered and we're, we appreciate Terry Duffy, who represents our town, township, in trying to help pass a resolution or at least maybe have a debate on the resolution. It appears there is no debate, so I don't know where the rest of the commissioners stand. But I just, on October 1st, I just read an article that the National Ocean, Oceanic Atmospheric Administration has released the data through satellite imagery that we have 250 to 300 oil spills per year in our country. When I mentioned to a few people, I said, oh, the world, I said, no, no, in our country, Atlantic Pacific and the Gulf of Mexico. Coal production is going, I believe, off the roof. We're being battered and we don't know what else to do. We're relying on you to support us. We have no one else to turn to. And I was hoping to end on a positive note, thanking you for your support, but if you can let us know how we can meet with these stakeholders and listen to their point of view, listen to ours, and if there's an open discussion, I think that's the least that we would expect from you. That's all we would want. So thank you for listening, and we'll stay tuned.
My name is Richard Stomper. I have worked and lived in Wayne, New Jersey for more than 53 years. I have a professional engineering degree, which is still active, and I've had that for 53 years. I am a, as I said, a Wayne resident at 101 Kiwanis Drive. I am vice chairman of the Wayne Environmental Commission. I was appointed to that commission by Mayor David Wax, his first term in office. And I'm proud to have known Dave and to sat next to Dave on the planning board, and what an individual, as you all know. I was disappointed tonight, okay? We thought we were gonna have a victory party tonight, but maybe that would be postponed for a few more weeks. But I'm interested to hear what the objectives have, the proponents of this gas compressor station, okay, have in mind. I'm very concerned about the methane gas, the methane gas that is gonna go be pumped at a higher pressure, okay, through these pipes, and which periodically that high pressure is gonna be controlled during a blowdown effect, okay, where raw methane is gonna be exposed to the atmosphere. Now methane is far more detrimental, okay, to our environment, okay, than carbon dioxide is. Methane for its first eight, first 20 years, okay, in the atmosphere is 80 times more detrimental than carbon dioxide. And it's really methane we have to attack first, okay, because of its bad effect, okay, as compared to carbon dioxide. I've been through the New Jersey's 2018 environmental, you know, survey and what the, what the state has to do, and some of the objectives, like the young lady mentioned before, in terms of our goals for 2030 and 2050, are gonna be tough to meet with today's environment. But I, looking forward to meeting you again, and good evening.
My name's Ted Glick. I don't live in Passaic County. I live in Bloomfield. I am, though, the president of the organization 350, New Jersey Rockland, which is a climate group. It's actually an international organization of people working around the world to try to reduce our emissions and to get off of fossil fuels. By the way, the International Energy Agency, earlier this year, set up basically by the, by the oil and gas industry in the 1970s, working with governments that were supportive of oil and gas and so on, they came out this year with an analysis that said that if we are going to have any chance of avoiding a really, a real meltdown of our ecosystems and our societies because of climate change, climate disruption, there should be no more build out of new fossil fuel projects this year. That's the International Energy Agency saying that, not the Sierra Club. That's the IEA. So I'd want to begin with that. It's not a small thing for you to keep postponing this and kind of going back and forth. I, I have the same question. Where are these stakeholders, you know, Commissioner Lepore, that you spoke to yesterday? Didn't you invite them to come to speak, to present their viewpoints tonight? Where are they? Are they here? Are they going to speak? That's, I mean, to me, that's just basic. Why, why wouldn't you say, look, we've been dealing with this issue for months and months and months. Why are you coming in so late? If you need to come in late, well, then come in tomorrow night to the meeting. And, and they're not here. They're not here, apparently. And I would just end with this. You, you said, and I appreciate your honesty in, in saying this, Commissioner Lepore, that this was your decision, you individually, and you didn't consult with any of your other commissioners. That's true. I would urge other commissioners not to let this one go. You know, the issues are really too important in terms of our climate, our future, our children's future, our grandchildren's future, not to mention the pollution that comes with this, that will come, the increased pollution. And by the way, hardly any jobs, there's virtually no jobs that come with pipelines. There are construction jobs in the construction, and that's about it. That's the reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Luke Slot, speaking on behalf of Sustainable West Milford as a director, which is located at 10 Pondrosa Place in Hewitt, New Jersey. We've been aware of this proposal since, I think, November or December of last year. I remember it very well because it was around the holidays and Renee and I had to, you know, with a lot of help from Renee, we had to file as intervenor status. We decided to file as intervenors before the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. TGP actually opposed our filing as intervenors, which to me is not being a good neighbor. They, they, they didn't want us to have a seat at the table, a group of community volunteers, you know, dedicated people who are concerned about what's, what's going on in their community. And I'm also getting PTSD because this is the same treatment we got from the governing body in West Milford, an all Republican dais. So I think there's been ample opportunity to debate this. I respect, you know, your authority, and I just hope that, that the next couple meetings, next meeting will, will go better. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Seeing no one at the, excuse me, seeing no one at the podium, move the closed public portion.
[inaudible] Second, Commissioner Lepore. No call.
County Commissioners, Okter, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, Lizarra, Deputy Director James, Director Lepore.
Yes. Okay, a couple of issues that I want to address. One, we've known here, indicated where are the stakeholders, why do you like telling them to be there tonight? I would... There we go. Why didn't I tell them to be there tonight? I realized that, I had the conversations yesterday and this morning, I realized it was kind of late, in fairness to everyone, for them to prepare whatever it is they need to prepare to come here. I will invite them to the next meeting. I believe it's the ninth, November 9th. I'm stating it here. I'm inviting them November 9th to be here. You're all welcome to be here. If they don't show, or if some of them show, or if nobody shows, that will be an indication to this board as to where they are on the issues. Maybe they don't want to address it, or maybe they do. I just want it to be fair with them and let them prepare. We've been listening to many of you since the beginning of the year, both virtually and lately in person, to bring your objections and, and your thoughts on the issues. But it's still one side. I think for this board to make a decision, even though the decision is, it's, it's, it's about supporting or not supporting a particular issue, we have no authority in this issue. It's more of an emotional response, and I know it's very important to you, and I respect that. I respect your passion, but in the sense of fairness, I just think that this should be done in this particular manner. They come, they make their case, they're open to questions from the board, and then the board makes a decision on that, on that, after that time takes place, whether or not they want to move forward with the resolution. But at least they'll be more informed as to what the issues are to everyone. So November 9th, they'll be here. And I want to emphasize it again, and I'm glad most of you caught it. This was my decision as the director. I have the authority. I know that I disappointed a couple of my colleagues, or a few of my colleagues here in this, but I made them, I made the same pitch to them as I made to you right now, is that I think it's the fairest way to deal with this. After November 9th, we'll find out where everybody's at and where everybody's going on this issue. I hope I answered your questions. And again, I'm sorry you made the trip, but November 9th is the next meeting where this will be discussed.
Director, through you also, just for a matter of public record, I'm in receipt of six additional emails from the public@public@passaiccountynj.org. Our public notice calls for recognizing that we received those six resolutions and they will go into the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners?
I do want to say something. First of all, I support you 100%, Director, and I know that the decision you made is in, in the vein of being fair to both sides, and that you don't really take a side, but you want to hear both sides. I also want to say that I believe in the science, I believe in the facts, and they're pretty hard to dispute at this point. So as we move forward and we have our meeting on the 9th, there are going to be some tough, tough questions being asked of the stakeholders. And so you understand that there's not, and I'm sure I speak for every commissioner up here, when I say, we base our decisions based on the facts and how we interpret those facts. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just, I just want to clarify, is this the commissioner reports part now?
Not yet.
All right. Well, since portion of my question report is on topic, I, I would like to add to this conversation. With respect to Resolution 023 regarding the TGP Pipeline Compressor Station, which is gonna be pulled from our consent agenda, I would vote in favor of that resolution for substantially the reasons enunciated in County Commissioner Duffy's letter last month and in the resolution itself. I'm open to hearing from other stakeholders. I look forward to November 9th and the opportunity to ask questions to those other stakeholders. But I want to specifically reject the notion that the compressor station represents a choice between the environment and the economy, and specifically that it represents, or that our position, if we pass Resolution 023 or something like it, represents any sort of opposition to work opportunity for workers in any industry, but particularly for organized labor. I want great opportunities for organized labor. I want our pipe fitters replacing lead pipes in places like Patterson and Flint, Michigan. I want our laborers and operating engineers and others restoring American infrastructure and building the great New Jersey technologies of the 21st century, like offshore wind and broadband. I, I don't think that the good jobs and the, and the jobs that will move our state forward are, are gonna be found in retrofitting and shoring up 20th century technologies that pose an unnecessary risk to our wilderness and our water supply.
Okay.
Commissioner, I just clarified, sorry, I want to say to those folks who are down, it's, you know, that we don't get man dependence at our meetings, and we have a very large counties that remind people, you know, a lot of folks stayed down here around Patterson for some mistake, don't realize how large a county that's when folks come down from West Milford in the evening during rush hour for a meeting. I do want to say that I appreciate it, and we all appreciate it. And, you know, even if this was not the meeting that you expected to be, your voice is still heard, and I think we all think that the fact that you've shown up consistently means something more than those who might show up for one meeting. So I do want to assure you on that fact that your voice is heard and you hear it. Director, just so we can clarify for these folks and for others, can we make an assurance that the next meeting, the resolution will not be on the agenda? That the next meeting will be a discussion of this resolution, and the resolution itself will not be on the agenda until, you know, we hear from, you know, from both sides? Are we able to make that assurance now so that these folks, if they aren't able to make the next meeting, at least know that, you know, that this isn't, you know, a meeting that's tied under a resolution? I don't want to jump spots, maybe...
No, that, that's a good question. It is a good question. Not knowing the extent of the meeting, not knowing just how much information needs to be absorbed by the board, if the board so chooses, after everyone has an opportunity to ask the questions, to put the resolution back on the agenda at that point, I'll reach out to county council on the legality of that, if we can. If that's what the board wants, wants to happen, then that'll happen.
Secondly, I think there's been some talk of debate on this issue, and, you know, the other side, the folks here are frustrated that they haven't heard from the other side. And if there are people who come and speak during the public portion, there is no debate or debate. That is only one sided. It's my hope that we can send a formal request to TNG or their representative to appear before the next meeting to give a report and for us to be able to ask them questions. If they decline that invitation, then it should be publicly known that they declined our petition. But at least that way, we can ask questions that I think we have, that have been brought forward by the public to them. I don't want a situation where people come to a public meeting and then people here are asking, why was there no debate? And who's on the other side? Either them or their appointed representatives come and give us a report in their respective, allow us to question them.
I, I, and, and thank you, very good, very good questions. But I tend to think that if, if we're gonna get into a debate conversation, I don't think that a commissioner meeting is the place for the debate. A special meeting or a special meeting, yeah, for lack of a better word, would have to take place where there would be a back and forth. We generally don't allow a back and forth here, especially on a very passionate issue, very important issue such as been brought forward to us. It's been, it's been my experience that once you start, once you go down that road, there's just, there's just gonna be...
Forgive me for using the word debate. All I'm saying is I think it's, we, the past allowed, like whether Vermont or state, somebody else like that, any entity that's potentially doing a project in the county, I don't think it's outside of our process to have them come give a report and allow us, nobody else, but just us to be able to question them on that report. I think that's within our process.
Okay, so, so, all right. That's, that's interesting because you would want just us to ask the questions and just in front of us or...
This is a project that they hope to do in State County. They are the, they're, it's their, I believe it's TNG, that's their product, or whoever they sent to represent themselves. They can simply give us a report for, you know, we can put a time limit on it, and then we can, we'll be allowed to ask some questions.
Commissioner, if I may, and to the director, we can have them in my administrative portion give a report, whether it's people from the Tennessee Pipeline or whether it's our union representatives, they can give a report, you could hear the report and then have the ability to question them rather than doing it through an open, through the public portion.
And I think the frustration a lot of folks from West Milford is that they cannot appear any other place. So if they decline our invitation, then we can publicly state that they...
But again, in fairness, they did show up in West Milford. There was a, an opportunity in West Milford. Whether or not people, you know, felt they got the answers or not, that's another, I'm not here to, to talk about that. But there's no back and forth, Renee. But, you know, certainly if you prefer that format to allow them to speak their piece, the board will be able to ask their questions and then... the board will be able to ask their questions, and then, and then there would be an opportunity to have public portion where people from the, from the public would be able to question what they said and-
Through the Director. My only concern with that, and it's good, thank you Anthony for proposing that, but my concern with that is if the questions are so numerous, and maybe the answers can't be given, you know, immediately at that point, then we're going to say, well, you know, we're going to have another meeting. I don't want to do anything without the public being witness to what's going on.
Director, let me ask you this. If they had a spokesman or somebody to represent their group from West Milford, if that would be okay with the West Milford group, or the people that are concerned about this project, and have them quiz whoever, they're going to, the representatives of the inside. We can quiz them, and their representative can quiz them. Would that be, we don't get out of control, because that's what you don't want.
Yeah, because of the passion and the emotion that's involved in this, I just want to be very careful as to how I proceed. I think Anthony brings up a good point, maybe during the administrative portion of the meeting, we can have a report given, everyone will hear it. You know, I'll take your notes, you'll, you know, write down the questions, not with members of the public, but the members of this board, I know, have some questions. And we can move forward and, you know, put this to bed on some sort of, some sort of fashion that may not be to everyone's liking, but at least people will see what's going on, and it'll happen right in front of them, so. What do you think? Everyone okay with that?
Thank you, Director, for your flexibility.
Yeah, that'd be great. I mean, yes.
I just have a point of clarification. What is the county official for?
None.
But we have no say-so in this, our strong agreement only earlier.
Well, I think, and good point, and we brought that up quite a few times, I think earlier this year, I had indicated that you're really before the wrong governing body on this issue. What I think what the residents are looking for is support from their county officials on this important issue, but that's all we can give at this point in time. Our support or our rejection of support will have no bearing on what happens with the project. But I think we owe it to you, and we also owe it to the other stakeholders, to have the conversation, to present the facts, and then let the board decide what they want to do after that. I don't know, I can't think of any other better way to do this. I'm hoping that, well, I'm hoping to see you on the 9th, I'm sure I will, and I'm hoping that everyone's answered, questions will be answered on that point. So if you have any other, any other issues, feel free to either contact me or the Administrator, and I can follow up with answers to whatever questions that you might have. But I'm looking forward to meeting with all the stakeholders, because I have questions myself. All right? Real good? Anybody else? Let's go back to the Commissioner Reports. I just have, I want to acknowledge the fact that a couple weeks ago, we went to the NJAC Conference, and the New Jersey Conference decided to acknowledge the efforts and the great work of our health official, Dr. Charlene Gungill, and they honored her with a recognition and a plaque, and I was given the honor of receiving it on her behalf. She's still recuperating from surgery, and so we wish her well, and I can't wait to hand it to her personally. All right, who else we have here, Director, Deputy Director?
I just want to point out, this Thursday, 9:00 in the morning, the county is hosting two webinars, one right after the other, but starting at 9:00 AM. And one is for going over our processes for procurement. So if somebody is interested in responding to an RFP, a bid, or whatever, we're going to go over every single portion of that, what has to be filed in terms of paperwork, the law, and hopefully people will be encouraged then to do business with the county in the correct way. Plus then Francine Vince, our Human Services Department, will be putting on a webinar on what programs come out of our Human Services Department, and so what the requirements are for those programs, what we helped accomplish from those programs, what dates that some of them come out. So hopefully the community that we serve will be able to respond to us if they want to respond to us, and they give them a clearer picture of where they need to be to use the county as a partner. We don't do it willy-nilly, it's planned, but it gives them the opportunity to participate. And that's been, since Impact Paseo has started, that's been our goal, is to have things that are community-driven, and this is one of those steps that help to have a community-driven response. So that's 9:00. You can contact the Commissioner's Office if you want a link to that webinar, contact our office, and you will be sent a link by email. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Commissioner Octor?
Thanks so much, Director. I just want to point out to folks that for the first time ever in the state of New Jersey, we have early voting, and that has started on Saturday, started Saturday of this last weekend, and will go through Halloween on Sunday, October 31st. In this, there are nine locations throughout the state county, in Clifton, Alden, Paseo, Two and Patterson, Wannacoo, Wayne, West Milford, and Woodland Park. And the beautiful thing is, is that for many people who may live in another part of the county, but, you know, and work in Patterson or work in different parts of the county, you can vote in any of the early voting sites as long as you're a registered voter in the state county. And that brings me to another point, which is that for the first time, you will be voting, if you go over early voting for on November 2nd, on Election Day, on our new electronic voting machines. And the reason why they can find you, even though you're a voter, in Patterson, in Wannacoo, if you still happen to do that, the reason they can find you is because, is because we have electronic books, and they can pull up your registration list instead of looking through, remember the old phone books that they would be looking through for your name? They are able to pull your name electronically and find you as a valid voter. I want to thank our governor and our legislators who have taken this progressive turn to make it easier for you to vote, give you more options to vote, while other states are closing your options to vote and making it more difficult to vote. I think this is the right thing to do for everybody, regardless of who you vote for, to make it simpler, and I thank them, and I thank our county for which we made the investment into these new machines, which, of course, there will be imperfections or slight difficulties, but it's a better system than otherwise replacing, and we have great confidence in it, and I encourage you to take advantage. So again, there'll be three ways for you to vote. You could, if you already have your ballot or you got it by mail, you can drop it in one of our drop boxes securely, any of the municipalities. You can vote early until Sunday. Polls are open from 8:00 AM to 8, 10:00 AM, 8:00 PM every day except Sunday, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And, or you can vote on Election Day if you prefer, on November 2nd.
Thank you. Commissioner Bartlet?
Thank you. Well, I was all ready to explain early voting, and Assad beat me to it. Anybody who missed anything that he said, our Superintendent of Elections, Shawna McPollock, has posted a very helpful four and a half minute video on her YouTube channel, which I've also put out on social media, and I think the county has as well, that's literally a tour of the new electronic poll books, the new voting machines, and an explanation of the early voting process. So as Commissioner Octor said, exercise your right to vote, however you vote, do so, early voting up until Halloween or on November 2nd. I also wanted to give an update on our Emergency Rental Assistance, or ERAP, program, which is helping families not have the COVID crisis turned into a housing crisis. We've managed to get about $8.7 million out into the community, paying rent for about 1,400 families affected by job loss due to the pandemic. That means we still have more than $20 million available in those federal funds from the CARES Act and the American Rescue Plan. You can find all the information and the application in English and Spanish online at impactpaseo.com. I encourage folks to share this, let folks know. We know that there are more than 6,000 eviction actions pending in court right now. A lot of those could be disposed of, and landlords could be made whole, and the families could be given some housing stability heading into the winter if folks participate in the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. So I encourage everyone to do that. And it's been a couple weeks, but Sandy, congratulations on an extraordinary fifth pause in the park in Gothabook Park a couple weeks ago. It's another great example of the kind of community service work that we do on this board, and it was a really, really fun day. So thank you.
Thank you. Got a couple things here. First, wanted to, again, Resolutions Number 19 and 20. Resolution Number 19 is for the shared services agreement between the county and state and the county, for the temporary transfer of inmates from the state county jail because of COVID-19 pandemic. As my colleagues know, but for the public, we've been in negotiations and conversations with all stakeholders around the state county jail and the future of the state county jail. As part of these conversations, it's brought to our attention that we are approaching, if not have exceeded, capacity at the jail as it is, which has made us take this proactive step forward to enter into this temporary shared services agreement with the county of Bergen for the transfer of inmates. This is a temporary agreement, as noted in the resolution, but it's also a test trial to see if this is something that the county is interested in moving forward. Our administration is in negotiations with the county of Bergen to discuss whether or not we want to have this be a permanent solution for the county. In addition to that, Resolution Number 20 is also for the county of the state to hire an architect to look at the possibility of doing, or not the possibility of actually doing, a feasibility study of a new jail, to see whether or not we could have a new jail. One thing that everyone on the committee agreed with is that the current jail is, if not passed, definitely approaching its usefulness, its functional usefulness, and we can't continue this long into the future. So we're not on an immediate time clock, but there is something that we need to do in the short term, and we're preparing for the future. I have these conversations where we have all stakeholders at the table, and we appreciate the men and women from our corrections office, as well as our sheriff and the civilians who are at the table. The cornerstone of these conversations is to ensure that each and every person currently employed in the jail has employment moving forward. That is a cornerstone. That is where we begin the conversation. With that employment, it looks like it's something that needs to be worked out, but it is our 100% effort to keep all of the jobs, and I wanted to make that perfectly clear. That being said, I also wanted to point out Resolution Number 24, which is the establishment of a minority business enterprise, and when did this business enterprise set aside? There are other counties and governments throughout the state who have these set asides. It's pastime that the state county does it as well, especially considering the diversity of our county. To now finally have a contractor to represent the diversity of our county, I think is great. So I wanted to commend our county council, as well as our administrator, for putting this resolution together, and I hope that my colleagues will succeed.
Director, just a report of, we had a field trip yesterday with the Administrator and our Director up to West Milford, met with the mayor. They were looking at the, how do you pronounce that park? Nunzio Park?
Nuzenzo.
Nuzenzo Park, to become a senior citizen, well, senior center and a kitchen for athletics. It's a great situation up there. We're trying to put all the pieces together. It's, West Milford's jumping on board, and we're going to try to help as much as we can to make this happen. Other than that, it's been pretty quiet for me. Thank you.
Yes, yes. First of all, Commissioner Bartlet, thank you about your comment about pause in the park. But as we know, with almost everything we do here, it's always a collaboration of different departments that bring what we envision to life. Our Buildings and Grounds Department, our Parks and Recreation, our Road Department, Senior Services, our Public Information Officer, County Council, the Sheriff's Department, everybody had a hand in pause in the park, and that's why it's a success. It's because we all come together and make it happen. We have another event coming up this Friday, and although it says to RSVP by the 22nd, we have extended that until Thursday. And this is an event for our veterans, and it's called Navigating Your Network of Support. And again, it's another endeavor by Paseo County and multiple departments of Paseo County to bring this to fruition. And we look forward to bringing our veterans into our fold to help them as much as we can. It says on here, it's the Paseo County Board of Commissioners, Paseo County Clerk, and Catholic charities from the Diocese of Patterson who are putting this on. But we couldn't do it without our Buildings and Grounds and our roads, and many, many departments that bring this together. It's October 29th at our Public Safety Academy. It starts at 8:30, and we have actually two events going on. We have our, you know, navigating your network of support for our veterans. We're also having a medal ceremony in the afternoon. You know, both are great endeavors, and, you know, we hope that our veterans hear this, and they sign up, and they come, because we have people coming from Lions to talk about post-traumatic stress. We have a workshop on, for female veterans only. We have one that is navigating the VA healthcare system, and one from the Vet Center. So if you go to www.paseocountyNJ.org, you can learn not only about this event, but you'll find a wealth of information concerning voting this year. So we encourage you to please pass the word, and just let everybody know that this is an event that's coming up this Friday. Thank you.
Director, through you, there's no late starters, just two amendments. The first that I've circulated to the board, 059, just a change in the title, Resolution
Authorizing the Acceptance of the New Jersey Department of Transportation, 2022, County A grant of $7,488,692, and the updated 2021 to 2026 Annual Transportation Program dated October 1, 2021 pursuant to NJSA 4020-1. And then just an amendment to 073, the Resolution Authorizing the Paseo County Prosecutor's Office to apply for and accept the FFY 2021 Overdose to Action Operation Helping Hands Grant, as issued by the New Jersey Office of the Attorney General. Just a fix and a typo of the subaward grant number. There's no need for executive session, just a reminder to the Commissioners, if anyone wants anything removed from the consent agenda, any resolution, just to make that motion through the Director. Thank you.
Okay. Just for the record, I will be following Resolution 023. Need a motion?
Director, before you do that, could I just, there's members of PBA 197 in the audience, and I just want to publicly thank them. It's a tough position for them to be sitting on this committee and talking about closing a building or potentially closing a building that they work in. This board, and I think Commissioner Best said it, I was going to say Commissioner Best said it best, but that seems weird. But it is really this time around about jobs, and early on, John, I said to you that I didn't want you guys to be passive participants, I wanted you to be active participants. And I want this board to know that it's a difficult position that we put the PBA in to have these discussions. But you've been an asset to the committee, I think you have done your membership well by asking the tough questions, and hopefully we're answering those tough questions. But I did want to thank you, because that, to me, is real leadership, to be in that difficult position, but be able to still represent your membership the way you're supposed to represent your membership. So I just wanted to publicly thank, you know, over the years, you know, we sit in contract negotiations, and sometimes they get, they get a little heated. But I have to say that it has been a pleasure and an honor to work with you guys in this particular case. So again, thank you very much. Mike, same.
At this time, I'll take a motion on the consent agenda. At this time, I'll take a motion on the consent agenda, oh one to oh ninety, with amendments to oh fifty-nine and oh seventy-three.
Director, through you, well, should I ask questions before or after a motion and second?
After the motion's made. What happened?
Yes, after the motion's made. Oh one to oh twenty-two. Oh twenty-four. Okay.
Okay. Fifty-nine and seventy-three.
Can I rephrase that motion? Take a motion, or I could do it all in one breath, or I got to do it separately? All right, I'll take a motion, because I'm pulling twenty-three, we got to do a little housekeeping here. Oh one to oh twenty-two, and oh twenty-four to oh ninety, with amendments to oh fifty-nine and oh seventy-three.
I'll move it.
Moved by Deputy Director James, seconded by Commissioner Lazara. Roll call.
Director?
If not, I'm sorry, discussion, discussion.
Question, I think through you to the administrator about oh eighty-five and oh eighty-six, the two resolutions authorizing reductions of the corridor enhancement fee associated with certain Passaic County Planning Board applications. I've seen this a couple times previously. Do we make a habit of authorizing these reductions? Because those, the corridor enhancement fee funds, you know, very small modest amounts of money, but they can actually be very impactful in municipalities. I know, for example, in my town of Wayne, we've been talking about pedestrian safety along Burdan Avenue and along Valley Road, and that's exactly, these are the funds that would be used for something like a lighted crosswalk or street scape improvements that improve pedestrian safety. I hope we're not making a pattern of authorizing these, and I'm contemplating asking that they be pulled so I can vote no on these two.
I'm going to defer to county council.
Yeah, Commissioner, generally, these come from recommendations from, from the planning director and the county engineer. I think, Mike, and correct me if I'm wrong, these are nonprofit applicants, is that why they were reduced?
One of them is a nonprofit, and one is a energy, clean energy project.
Yeah, so generally, these don't happen with a large amount of frequency, but usually there's circumstances like that where the planning board's trying to work with the applicant so that they can do whatever they need to do, you know, within their constraints.
Okay, that's a great answer. Thank you very much, and I don't need those pulled, I'll be voting, yes.
Anybody else? Roll call.
County Commissioners, Octor. Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. New business personnel?
Move the personnel agenda.
Motion made by Deputy Director.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Lazara. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Octor. Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James. Director Lapore.
Yes. Hills.
Hills List.
Motion made by Double D.
Second.
Seconded by Lazara. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Octor. Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James. Director Lapore.
Yes, motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Duffy, seconded by Commissioner Bartlet. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Octor. Bartlet.
Yes.
Best. Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Don't forget to vote and go home safe.